Greetings from the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce. We're here today for our Meet the Candidates event for ISD 191 Burnsville Egan Savage School District. I'm Jennifer Harmoning with the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce and I'm pleased to introduce our moderator for today, Brady Folkstead, our Public Policy Chair for the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce. Brady, take it away.
Thanks Jennifer. Thanks for joining us for the ISD 191 Get to Know the Candidates Forum. Today we've got four candidates with us, all running for school board coming up for this November's election. We gave all of the candidates the questions in advance. They all have seen them. We randomly selected how they will, what order they'll answer the questions in. And so we will take you through each one of the questions that specifically deal with the community and the Chamber of Commerce as it relates to the school board. But with that, it is Get to Know the Candidates, and so that's how we're going to start. We're going to be starting with Anne Marie. So Anne Marie, you've got a couple of minutes. Tell us a little bit about yourself and what motivated you to run for office?
Thanks Brady. So my name is Anne Marie Anderson. My husband Taren and I moved to Burnsville about 10 years ago. Moved here from the East Coast. I have two sons in fourth and third grade at Gideon Pond. I'm on the PTO board at Pond and I'm currently serving my fourth and what will be my final year as a Minnesota Reading Corps tutor through AmeriCorps. So I'm running for the school board because I see a need for representation and advocacy that reflects the experiences of our students and their families. Having firsthand experience in our schools, I understand the challenges and opportunities that our community faces. I believe that those who have navigated the educational system, whether as parents, teachers, students, bring in invaluable insight to help shape policies and initiatives. I also recognize that there's gaps that need to be filled and I'm committed to addressing those gaps. So I have the means, both in terms of time and resources in my life, to dedicate myself to this role, to work collaboratively with other board members, educators, community members, and stakeholders. And my goal is just to ensure that every voice is heard, that our schools are places where students can thrive. Thanks.
Thank you. And Rachel, you're next. Please introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about yourself and what motivated you to run for office?
Good evening. Thank you very much for having this forum. Similar to Anne Marie, I've been in the district for quite a while, 20 years, over 20 years. I have three children, two of whom just recently graduated from BHS, and my third has just started her freshman year. We've gone through the district through elementary, middle, and high school. So I've had experiences with faculty, administration, and just what life is like at all levels within the district. And we've always had very positive experiences through 191. My son, for example, we were going through the yearbook and you know, his was looking through the faculty list and going through that and just the experiences and what he had to say about everyone that he interacted with just were great. And I really think that these are experiences that are typical within the district. And so I just feel very strongly about believing in the district. What I want to bring to the district is my skills as a CPA. It's something that because of your life outside of the schools and outside of home, I now have the wherewithal and the time to be able to participate in something like the school board, which I just, I didn't have an opportunity before. And so that's why I'm running now. I've always been interested in government and thought of government really as the way to serve and give back to my community. And I really am looking forward to devoting the time and energy to continuing success through the 191 schools and being a board member. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chris, now over to you. If you could take a couple of minutes to introduce yourself to our viewers, that'd be awesome.
Hi, my name is Chris Peach and I've lived in Burnsville for about 50 years. I went to Gideon Pond, starting from third grade, went to Niklet Junior High School, and then graduated from Burnsville High School. After that, I went to Mankato State University. After a little bit of working in the insurance field, I moved to Japan to become a ESL teacher. And I stayed there for about 10 years, came back for about a year, and then went to China for about 20 years. Just recently got back and wanted to use some of the things that I learned, whether it be teacher training or any kind of teaching, that I could bring it back here and apply it here in Burnsville. And the reason I'm interested in becoming part of the school board is I just want to be engaged in education. I really enjoy working with education and all aspects of it.
Thank you. And Anna, if you could please take a little bit here to introduce yourself to the viewers.
Hi, I'm Anna Werbe and I am a current school board member. I initially ran back in 2020 and I really haven't changed much from initially when I, when I first ran, as far as my motivations. We were in the throes of the pandemic. Schools were shutting down. It was a very interesting time. There were, we had just come out of struggling with, you know, closing the school, closing some of our schools, budget issues. And I'd been heavily involved also with, you know, groups at work with diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I was very much involved with wanting to make sure our district was very inclusive to all of our students. And I was, you know, seeing things going on in the district that had concerned me. And in talking with other individuals that I worked with, they were, you know, encouraging me to run for the school board to, you know, try and see what I could do to make a difference. And at that time, I was also already on the PTO. And I also had a background in the insurance, health insurance, which if you are familiar with the budget for the school district, health insurance and employee salaries are a very large part of the budget. So I felt like having the insurance background would help in that aspect. So, but I just, you know, had top of mind just being inclusive to all of our students and putting that at the forefront and making sure we were being very equitable to all of our students.
Hey, we want to hear the buzzer music. Thank you very much. Thank you everyone for introducing yourselves a little bit. Now, next, we're going to dive into our questions. And Rachel, it's going to be coming to you first. So give me just a moment to know that you're up next. But the question is student retention and recruitment is critical for the future of District 191 as our student population has been changing, especially at the transition points, elementary to middle school and middle school to high school. As a school board member, how could you address this issue?
Thank you. Unfortunately, you know, there's no quick and easy answers to the issue. You know, I think some of the school numbers are a bit out of control, out of our control because, you know, for example, housing where, you know, longstanding residents, their children are aging out of the schools. And yet, we don't have empty space for replacement, new housing that bring in young families. But that means that, you know, we need to keep our students in school. We need to be able to recruit students. And so I think, you know, promoting the benefits for what Burnsville can provide. We have engaged teachers. We have flexible options like the Virtual Academy, the Pathways Program that really is something that can keep kids engaged and excited about school because they can see that it's something that is directly tied to their future and being able to provide them some of the benefits. And we need to get this message out there. You know, students, parents in the district are our best resource to be able to get that positive message expressed so that we can, you know, communicate what is going well within the district and kind of do some of that counter programming to maybe what is out there. And so it's really, you know, engaging the community to be involved.
All right. Thank you. Over to Chris. Chris, what can you as a school board member do to address recruitment and retention?
I had never really considered this question until we received these questions. But it struck me because I was looking at the the reviews online for the school district and they seemed quite favorable. Now, the only thing I see as the competitor to District 191 would be private schools in our area. You had mentioned when they transitioned from, for example, elementary to to junior high school, junior high school to high school, that's when a lot of people change their schools. My guess would be to promote that those those reviews and show what a good place and what a good schools there are in School District 191. So promoting the reviews up until now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna, over to you. Recruitment and retention and what you can do as a school board member if elected?
Yes. As a current school board member, this is a top priority for me. And what I will do and continue to do is to support our staff. And especially with those transitions to those, you know, those milestone years when they're transitioning to elementary to middle school and middle school to high school. I think we've done some, you know, great work with those teams who are working to develop smoother transitions because those are some key areas where we tend to lose students. We came out with a great program this year, so the Ninth Grade Academy. Just, you know, offering support when we hear those things that are being developed and encouraging them to do more of those types of programs and, you know, approving any type of programming that's coming to us as a school board. And then also encouraging them to go back and doing more of the surveys and more of the research. And, you know, being thoughtful in the campaigns that we're promoting to the community and getting out the word as far as like pathways and just all the, even just the stuff we're doing with kindergarten prep and all that kind of stuff too, because it starts with just, it starts in getting new enrollment too, and just getting those kids at the beginning and keeping them.
All right. Thank you. And Anne Marie, over to you. Recruitment and retention as a school board member?
Thank you. I think there's several things that could be done. First is maintaining our academic excellence. Despite popular belief, 191 has great outcomes in their testing scores. I think they've made great strides implementing new curriculum. Pathways Program is one of those examples. And I think we should be not just continuing those, but also continuing to fund them and offer the teacher support for them. A second thing, school student safety is a top concern that I hear from parents who are considering leaving 191, especially after elementary school. So I think the district needs to be more proactive in addressing behavior issues and improve communication with families when there is an unsafe situation that arises. Having clear protocols and transparency essential. Third, I think we need to really focus on obtaining and retaining quality teaching talent. High-quality teachers, as we all know, are the backbone of a successful school. And we need to make sure that our teachers are feeling supported and we're rewarding an environment. We're sorry, and are offering them a rewarding environment, sorry. And then finally, I think relationship building with the community, that's probably the most important.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, as we rotate through, Chris, just so you know, you are up on this next question first. Pathways Model, it's been a cornerstone of ISD 191 for some time now, nearly a decade, and it's been a differentiator for our district. As we're about a decade into it, if elected, do you continue to support that model? Why or why not? Or are you thinking a different direction? Chris?
This is, again, this is my first introduction to the Pathways Program. I had read a little bit into it before the meeting here. It looks like a good program. It's got good principles. It looks like the program is encouraging people to continue on through good teaching, through continuing with the school district's education. If it works, don't fix it. We'll stop there.
Thank you. And Anna, up next to you. Pathways Model, continue? Why, why not?
Yes. As a school board member, I will continue to support and promote the Pathways Program. It's proved to be a successful program. Year after year, we've continued to add on to this program. More pathways. We've even added the AAS degree that kids can now achieve prior to graduation. We've extended it into the elementary schools now where they can be exposed to different career paths as young as, you know, even the kindergarten level. So this is something that, you know, our district can tout as something that is not offered anywhere else. And it's absolutely something that will, you know, be like, it is like our beacon and we can proudly shine it as our district. You know, is one of our our you know, highlights as far as especially retaining students in our, in our district.
Thank you. Anne Marie, to you. Pathways?
So yes, I would definitely continue to promote Pathways. I think, you know, there was a delay in implementing Pathways into the younger grades because of COVID. And that was frustrating for educators and parents. A lot of parents don't even know what Pathways is. So I think in the high school, it's been very, very successful. Between Pathways, Avid, and the Associate of Arts Program, there have been great outcomes. I do think that for it to succeed, rolling it out into the younger elementary and middle school grades, there needs to be more funding and staff support. So I would say yes, and promote it even more and support it even more. Teachers and administrators need resources, not just to teach, but to mentor through the Pathways Program. So, yes, and.
Okay, thank you. And Rachel, over to you on Pathways.
Yes, I definitely support the model. You know, I think that, you know, students really appreciate the opportunity to take classes to see if they really do like a subject before they have to dole out a bunch of money to actually, you know, get a degree or commit to it as a career. The fact that we have pathways that are kind of pre-college bound along with more practical application-type pathways for trades, I think is very important and a wonderful aspect to the Pathways Program. Because not everyone's going to go to college. And, you know, the fact that our students aren't hearing, well, college is the only thing and you must, you know, be, you know, and only hearing college, 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 that they really can see that school and these programs can provide them a benefit that they are going to be able to reap the, you know, rewards from for years to come is something that's very crucial, I think, with the Pathways Model. The fact that they can have an associate's degree when they graduate and be able to have that step up in their college degree, to be able to make college affordable for them and maybe for people to actually consider college that thought that it was out of reach before. You know, these are all things that the Pathways Program can do for the students. So it definitely is something that I support.
Okay, thank you all. Next question's going to be going to Anna first. Anna, as a chamber, workforce development is huge for us and future workers and more people to work at our area businesses is vital. What do you believe the school's role is in preparing our future workforce? Sorry, it looks like we've got a little bit of a technical issue here.
Sorry, it's trying to find the unmute.
There we go.
Yes, okay. Yes, I believe that it is our responsibility to have them prepared for going out in the workforce. We should be providing our students with the tools and resources so they are ready to enter the workforce upon graduation, if they choose. I mean, there's always, you know, they should be able to either go on the workforce or continue on into college. But if they choose to go to work, they should be able to learn while in school what responsibilities they have to, you know, to an employer as far as, you know, showing up to work on time, being responsible to complete tasks. You know, what, taking ownership. I believe that, you know, our district provides valuable lessons and real-life experiences in understanding what it's like once they get out in the workforce. This is, this is something that they, they were getting real-life experience for now. I mean, specifically in the Pathways Programs where they're actually doing this stuff already. This is like life skills. You know, it's not like back in the day, I remember when I went to school, it's like you just went and learned and it wasn't like, you know, something you felt like you could apply at a job.
Thank you. Onto Anne Marie. Workforce development at the school level?
Sure. I mean, obviously, the school is a crucial part of preparedness for the workforce. I do believe that parents are the first teachers. However, what we learn at school is crucial beyond academics. I think schools play a key role in developing social, emotional learning, problem-solving, communication skills. And I, I was thinking about this question the other day and I was remembering when I was 21 years old, coming out of college, I had like my mind blown by how much I didn't know about the world. And realizing my worldview was so small. And when we moved to Burnsville, we chose Burnsville because of its diversity, because we wanted our kids to grow up with their minds being open and their worldview being as large as possible coming out of school. So I think we're doing our job as parents, but also it is crucial that school gives our students, not just academics, but the skills and experiences that they need to to be productive members in the workforce.
Thank you. And Rachel?
Yes, yeah, obviously, you know, schools play a crucial role in preparing our children, you know, just through their basic skills. You know, the three Rs. Yes, you have to have that as a foundation. But also, you know, social skills. Workers need to interact with people that they may not always like on a personal level or feel like they have a lot in common with. And school is the place where students don't always have a choice in who might be in their small group that they work with or who they sit next to in class. And they need to develop the skills to be able to work successfully with people who, you know, again, they may not normally, you know, choose to sit next to. And so it's a great place where people can realize how they can successfully navigate these kinds of situations. And, you know, anytime you're dealing with the public, coworkers, you know, you need to have experience dealing with others. Developing critical thinking skills and the ability to find an answer and to know how to find an answer and to have just basic curiosity because, you know, you're not always going to know the answer to everything. And so schools can teach our students how to find those answers and think on their feet and think for themselves versus always having to just go and ask for an answer, which will prepare them because that is what employers want. They want proactive employees.
Thank you. And now over to Chris. Chris, what do you believe the school's role in preparing our future workforce is?
I think the role of our schools is to get students college-ready. I know it's focusing a little more on the the workforce portion of the question, but I think the same, same skills apply. I think the schools can help the students with language skills, public speaking skills, presentation skills, some of these soft seals, leadership skills, problem-solving skills. These are the types of things that they should be coming out of the district after they graduate from high school and be able to apply to some degree, whether it be in the workforce or college, which would be where I'd be kind of focusing most people to go.
Thank you. Next question, Anne Marie, you can prepare yourself. Top priority, what is your top priority as a school board member should you be elected?
I didn't choose one. Surprise. So I think number one, I think transparency. I'd like to advocate for clear communication regarding board decisions, budgets, policies, and engaging families with that information. I think two is equity. I think it's crucial that we ensure that every student has access to resources and support that they need to succeed. I would like to work to identify and address disparities in funding programs, opportunities, particularly for students in our MML, I'm sorry, MLL and SPED programs, including advocating for inclusive curricula, support services, extracurricular activities, et cetera. And then also lobbying to the legislator. We can't do anything we want to do if the state doesn't give us enough funding. And I think as a school board, we should be pushing as much as, as we can onto, onto our state representatives and convincing them that they need to invest in us.
Thank you. Now Rachel, Rachel, what's your top priority as a school board member should you be elected?
Basically, the top priority is to promote 191 in a variety of ways. Similar to what Anne Marie mentioned, definitely promoting the district at the state level to be able to have the funding that's necessary, to be able to provide the kinds of programs that we want to, to be able to have the quality teachers and to be able to, you know, pay them what they deserve, which force would never be enough. Also, just promoting the 191 roadmap, you know, community proficiency, future readiness, the, you know, having student agency, you know, this is how the general public will consider 191 as a place for their students. You know, it might also be, you know, Virtual Academy or through the Pathways Program. You know, this is how we can kind of minimize open enrollment out of the district. We can improve student retention. You know, and our kids have to graduate. We need to focus on graduation rates. A high school diploma is really kind of the bare minimum that a person really needs to be impactful in their community. And so it would be really working on promoting 191 as a place to stay and a place to be and a place to support through funding, fiscal discipline, strategic uses of our resources, you know, to really get the message out and be able to keep 191 as successful. to really get the message out and be able to keep 191 as successful.
I forgive my mute on every once in a while too, so apologize for that. Chris, you're up next for your top priority should you be elected?
My top priority to be, being a school board member would be to give due consideration to the different issues that that confront us, to be fair and balanced in my assessment of those issues. Along with communication with perhaps parents, students, and those who fund us, politicians, the state reps and the senators. I think that would be all.
Thank you. And Anna, over to you. Your top priority should you be elected in November for next term?
Yeah, so I know probably top of mind should be, you know, retention and, you know, keeping the enrollment where it's at and not losing anymore. But for me, increasing test scores, I believe, is crucial. We are still not at pre-pandemic levels as far as literacy and math. We have a roadmap that's, you know, geared towards increasing those test scores. We've got supports, you know, in place and programming that we've been approving. And I will, I want to continue that that path of putting those supports and programs in place to continue to get us back to pre-pandemic levels. I mean, these are basic skills that all of our students need to succeed in life. I mean, math and reading, those are important. I mean, every child should be able to be at their level for what grade they're in. And we've done, you know, great things with bringing in programs like the Hegarty Program and we're implementing K through five math curriculum and we've got math interventionists. And I just, you know, as a board member, feel strongly about continuing to support those types of programs because our kids are here to learn. They need to learn. And that's, that's what is about, you know, educating our kids. That's gonna get us to those graduation rates and keeping, you know, kids in school. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, now moving on, kind of last things to say. Rachel, you're gonna be up first in this instance. And please let us know in a minute what, why you are the best candidate to represent our area.
Well, thank you. You know, I have had my experiences in the district with my family and my children. You know, but every family and every student experience is different. And so I'm humble enough to say, I don't know. You know, please tell me your perspective. Please tell me your experience, your thoughts. You know, I'm a good listener. And also, I thrive on research. I study, I weigh the perspectives, information to determine what can provide the best outcome for the district, and I will do that to the best of my ability. I can bring kind of my analytical mind as a CPA to the decisions that the board needs to make. And, you know, I definitely have this desire to be of service to my community. You know, I know it sounds corny, but, you know, I'm a parent and we thrive on being corny. I want to serve my community.
Thank you. Chris, you're up next here. Let us know why you'd be the best candidate for our area.
I don't know if I'd be the best candidate, but I do think I would be a good candidate. I've had extensive, spent a lot of time over the last 30 years working in educational institutions. I've worked with children as young as, is three and four years old and is all the way up through adult education. We've worked, I've worked with schools, public schools and private schools. And I've been able to see progress with different programs. So I think I'd have a fresh set of eyes to some of the issues that confront our schools.
Thank you. And Anna, you next. Why would you be the best candidate to represent us?
I would be the best candidate because I am currently a board member. I'm seeking reelection. I've been on the board for four years and I've, you know, enjoyed being a part of this board and being part of approving the programs and moving things forward in our district that I believe have benefited our students. I want to continue to be a part of that. I want to advocate for our students. I have two children in the district. I believe it's important to, you know, also have a civic mind and knowledge of, you know, our budget and making sure that everything is within the confines of, you know, keeping things fiscally responsible and understanding that piece of that as well. And with my experience, I have that knowledge. And I want to continue to keep doing the work I've been doing.
Thank you. And Anne Marie, over to you. Why would you be the best candidate to represent us at school board?
Thank you. So I have two kids on IEPs in the district. I'm on the PTO board. I'm volunteering at the school as a reading tutor. And all those things give me really unique perspectives from lots of different hats that I wear in the district itself. But beyond that, I have a master's in pastoral counseling and spiritual direction, which gives me a really unique skill of being an objective observer and a thoughtful discerner. So hearing people's opinions, making decisions, that's kind of my jam. And then also, my past work experience, I have worked in Philadelphia with the poorest and most vulnerable members of the city as well as working in banking. So I have a different kind of perspective there as well, where I can see a large view.
Okay, and thank you. Actually, thank you to all of our candidates. Thank you very much, each of you, for joining us. Thank you very much for sharing with the constituents in ISD 191 what your views are on the school board. And thank you as well for taking the time to run and serve our community in this way. We all appreciate it very much. For those watching, just a reminder, November 5th, I'm sure all of our candidates have that date well-marked on their calendar. Where of the four candidates that we have, you've got the opportunity to vote for the three that you most feel would serve us best on the school board. So please get out on November 5th and do that. Again, thank you very much and thank you for joining us. I'm Brady Fokes, head of Public Policy Committee with the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce, and now over to Jennifer.
Thank you, Brady, and thank you to our candidates. Brady is a volunteer and dedicates a lot of time to hosting these and we really appreciate it. We also appreciate the partnership between the Burnsville and Savage Chambers to bring you this information. As Brady said, election day is November 5th. Early voting starts September 20th. Please go to the Minnesota Secretary of State website to find out what's on your ballot, where your polling place is, and all those great details, and get out and vote. Thank you for joining us today.